Welcome, everybody. I am calling this Board of Education meeting to order. It is Monday, April 18, 2022. It is 6:11. We are in the Nashua North Boardroom. And we have Ms. Raymond back just for a little bit tonight. But do you mind doing roll call?
Sure, I can do roll call. I will do my best to do the curking. At some point, I might need to tap in, have somebody else take over. But I appreciate everyone's patience with me. Ms. Darling?
Here.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Great. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond's here. Ms. Lampier? Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Ziem? Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Ziem left. Okay.
And Ms. Lampier's on the--.
And Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Okay. Oh, we also have, sorry, Dr. McKinney? Dr. Sarfey? Wait, I saw her. Did she leave?
She's right there.
Oh, there she is. Sorry. Mr. Parker? Mr. Donovan? And Ms. Carey? And we have guests this evening. Master Sergeant Nick Ellis. And I know behind the podium is Lieutenant Colonel May-- wait, Lieutenant Colonel Meyer from our JROTC program. Did I miss anybody? Okay.
So first, we would like to start off with our JROTC program. You guys have a-- what?
Prayer and Pledge.
Oh, the prayer.
And the pledge.
I just really wanted to get to work tonight. Yes.
Pledge.
Sorry. Prayer and pledge. Do you mind reading the prayer?
Mm-hmm. Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Ms. Johnson, can you lead us in the pledge? You're the first one up, so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we get to get into the presentations. I was just so excited to see you guys. So the floor is yours. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Well, thank you. I am Lieutenant Colonel Meyer, the new instructor joining Master Sergeant Ellis, who I'm sure most of you know. I'm very pleased to join the team. Sergeant Ellis's leadership, along with the enthusiastic leadership of the Cadet Corps, together, they've built a great program. I was made aware when I arrived that they had just recently had their tri-annual inspection from the headquarters, and they received the highest rating possible with high accolades for the Cadet Corps and Sergeant Ellis. So I feel like I joined a A-team, and I feel very grateful for that. I'm a big believer in JROTC. I've been doing it for 13 years, and I know what it can do for students, whether they're going to join the military, go to college, go to the workforce. It doesn't really matter. Those life skills that they're going to get will serve them well no matter where they go. And I'll turn it over to our Cadet Corps Commander Claire DeRoziers to tell you a little bit more about the program.
Thank you, Colonel. As Colonel said, I'm Claire DeRoziers, and I have the pleasure of serving as our group commander for this school year. And I'm very happy to be here to talk about our program with all of you. So without further ado, we are the Nashua Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps. So that's what JROTC stands for, in case anyone was wondering. And we're for all high school students, no matter their grade and no matter if they go to North or South. And so anyone that wants to enroll in our program is making an active choice to become a leader in their program, because that's what we really emphasize in this program. It's cadet-run and instructor-advised, meaning my staff and I plan and execute all of the activities that our cadets participate in. But we also have the high degree of mentorship given to us by our instructors. So we are very grateful for our instructors. They are really the backbone of our program. But at the same time, it's really me and my staff doing a lot of the day-to-day operations of our unit. And it's also important to note, though, that this is not a program that pushes the military on any of our cadets. Sure, we have recruiters come in sometimes to do PT with us, but that's really the extent of our relationship there. So that's a common misconception about JROTC. We do not push JROTC at all. There's no service commitment whatsoever. On the flip side, though, there are benefits to doing JROTC if you do choose to enlist. For example, if you do at least three semesters of JROTC, you can actually rank up higher than your fellow enlisted after you finish boot camp. But that's just one plus of JROTC. I'll get into the rest of that later on. And as a unit, we're also very proud of serving our community. For the last four years, we've averaged almost 1,000 community service hours every single year, even during COVID. And that is made possible through our partnerships. We have about eight that are active right now. One of the most active partnerships that we have is with the VFW. We do quite a bit of color guard events for them. And before the school year started, we were doing events with them. We helped with their 101st anniversary dinner held at the Country Club, which was a lot of fun. Each cadet is required to do at least 10 hours of community service, but we have many, many cadets that go well above that minimum to get those 1,000 hours in. And we also, I'm very confident in saying, we offer the best opportunities for our cadets. In the past three years, we've had six people win the Junior ROTC scholarship for-- to get their private pilot license. And some of us are in this room right now. And we have three people who won full-boat ROTC scholarships. And these scholarships are on a national level. They're competing with thousands of other cadets. So I firmly believe that our unit here in Nashua really cultivates these leaders that are rising to the challenges for these scholarships. And in addition to all these scholarships, in addition to our curriculum that's full of aviation and space courses, we also offer quite a bit of opportunities for networking, for college and career prep, and real-world skill-building like resume writing and cover letter writing, which I find very useful. I've gotten quite a bit of interviews and internships because of the skills that I've learned in this very program. So that's a little bit of a snapshot of our program. I just want to reemphasize my admiration for this. I've seen what it's done for me, what it's done for other cadets, for the cadets sitting in this room. So I want to thank you all for letting me speak tonight, for allowing us to come. And thank you. Have a great night.
I think this program is amazing. Thank you, guys, for coming and sharing it with us. And hopefully, people watch this tonight, and you guys get some more people in there, because I think it's a great program.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So my apologies, Cadet Lieutenant DeRoziers, but I see that you've just taken off your poster. But I can't read the poster from here, because my eyes aren't that good. I wondered if you could just tell us what's on it?
Sure. Yeah, so here's-- so this is our unit patch. It symbolizes that we are forthright, attending both North and South. Here's our unit number. We were actually the first unit established in 2014 in New Hampshire, so that's what it symbolizes there.
I'm sorry. Can you go back to the microphone while you do it? I know you're trying to make it so we can see it, but I also want to make sure everyone can hear what you're saying.
I was waiting for Jimmy to start yelling, but he didn't. So I thought it was working.
It's because she has a carrying voice. I like it. Speak with your diaphragm.
So those are the patches in the top corners there. It really symbolizes our unit. Everyone has it on their uniforms, because that's what symbolizes our unit. And then the three pictures. One is from one of the drill competitions we've done. We visit schools, and we compete in drill competitions. That's a relatively new thing for us, so we're still working on that. I believe another picture is when we marched with the VFW in the Veterans Day Parade. We were doing the color guard event there in the morning, and then we marched with them down Main Street. And then another picture is from, I think, another drill competition that we had recently this year. So we have a lot of fun in JROTC. We travel a lot for these drill competitions. They're all cadet-led. And I think those bullet points are just what I talked about in my presentation. And then the three phrases at the bottom, those are our core values: integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all we do.
Thank you. It shines through. Okay. Thank you, guys. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have-- Sunset Heights was not able to come tonight. We'll see you soon, but we're Sunset Heights family, so we look forward to you guys coming in. We have our consent agenda, so I'd be looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Gilio, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Darling, do we have any discussion? You can do it now if you want to.
I'd like to add an email received Monday, April 18, at 2:21 from Leslie Anton, from Anton L. at Nashua.edu that came to all of the members of the board.
I have no objection to that.
Just to clarify, you want to add that to tonight's instead of waiting two weeks?
Yes, I'd like to add it to tonight's minutes.
Okay. Can you say it again?
Add an email that was sent to the entire board on Monday, April 18, at 2:21 PM from Leslie Anton L. at Nashua.edu.
Is that a friendly amendment, or do we need to vote on that separate?
I think it's a friendly amendment. It was only sent to board members, which is why, if you guys are looking for it, it didn't come to you. Okay. So on the motion to accept the consent agenda with the added email, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. That's Ms. Johnson. So motion passes. Do you want to put that email in the board book so Gabby has it, so she can scan it in?
Thank you.
Nice. So we already went through items removed and items added. At this point, we will open up our first public question comment period, limited to items on the agenda. Wow, things have changed.
My goodness. Okay.
Okay, after that extensive public comment period, we will now go into superintendent's comments. Dr. McKinney, take it away.
Thank you. Four fabulous things for this evening. Happy Marathon Monday, and congratulations to Mr. Burns, Principal of Nashville High School North, who ran the Boston Marathon today. Mr. Burns is an accomplished runner and a veteran Boston marathoner. Mr. Burns finished the race today in under three hours, 2 hours and 52 minutes and 22 seconds. Better him than me. Congratulations to Abenav Avaru, South Class of 2024, won Best in Fair at the New Hampshire Science and Engineering Exposition for his physics and electronics project. He also won a special $400 cash award from the Mitri Corporation, a nonprofit organization dedicated to solving problems for a safer world. The New Hampshire Science and Engineering Exposition was held March 17 in Concord. And because of his Best in Fair win, Abenav is eligible to attend the prestigious International Science Fair, which will be held later this year in Atlanta. His project was among the three national projects to place in the statewide competition. The others include second place for computers, Arsh Goenka, South Class of 2023; environmental science, second place, Saharla Sharma, North Class of 2022; and first place, Abenav Avaru, South Class of 2024, an economical approach to detect vaping, preventing a vaping epidemic among adolescents. So congratulations to our students for their success at the expo, as well as their pursuit for the study of science and engineering. Next, the Granite State Challenge. The South Granite State Challenge team has reached the semifinal round. The South team took 100-question tests to qualify for one of the coveted 16 spots to complete in a long-running New Hampshire Public Television Academic Quiz Show. So tune into NHP-TV at 6:00 PM on April 30 to see if South advances against the defending champs Merrimack High School to compete in the final championship round. Best of luck to the team, and best of luck to the coach, who is coached by Lex Duval, a social studies teacher at South. Go Purple! And lastly, don't forget, tomorrow's the day the Nashville School District is hiring, from Paris to plumbers. Come one, come all. We're anticipating openings in all certification areas. Please join us tomorrow from 3:30 to 6:00 PM at Nashville High North. Vacancies are posted on the district website. And if you're a job seeker, we hope that you'll consider us, and see you tomorrow. Thank you.
Wow, that's fantastic. Blown away. Now we will go on to board members' response to comments. We'll start over here. Mr. Claffey? No comments. Ms. Johnson? Ms. Darling?
No comment.
Ms. Raymond?
I'll just say, congratulations to all. That was a really positive set of comments. And I just wanted to also say that also tomorrow is Nashville Jazz Night at South. So come, apply for a job, and then stay for jazz. Jobs and jazz. Jazzy jobs. There's a jazzy vegetarian on PBS. I should stop talking. She's a cooking person, but I love her. Anyway, come, Ms. Gilio.
Oh, are you speaking? Okay. Yeah, congratulations to all on the good news that Dr. McKinney shared. And as someone who's watched the Granite State Challenge for years and years and years, I was so excited to see South win again. Yay.
I also have just commend the students and the staff who are supporting the students. And it's just, it's fantastic to see our kids excelling outside of, you know, their classrooms. So what a great opportunity. And now we know what friend has an extra $400 to go to California Burrito. So go find them. Okay. Student member of the board comments, Mr. Sahu.
Thank you, guys. In addition to all the great things that Nashville South has going on, I just want to congratulate their Technology Student Association, or TSA for short, team. They had their statewide competition last week, and they had a few teams placing first and making it to the national competition, which will be held in Dallas this coming June. So yeah. And just with some of the dates going on, the freshman dance is being held on May 20. So if you have any questions, please reach out to Ms. Cox in Student Activities Center, or stay posted with information on the Google Classroom. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, so on to Committee on Budget. We had our meeting last Wednesday, the public hearing. We'd like to thank Alderman Dowd for showing up and participating in the public hearing. We'll have our next meeting, the Wednesday after-school vacation, to review line items, ask more questions, and hopefully pass it on to the Alderman. I will pass the baton, or the conch shell, depending on where we are, over to Ms. Johnson for Committee on Finance and Operations.
Thank you. Our meeting was held on April 12, 2022. So now I'm going to move to approve erecting a bench in memory of Shay Thomas Patno at New Cyril's Elementary School.
Any discussion? Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, my next one is--
Ms. Brown?
And there is a color fun run coming up to help sponsor that bench. I think it's the second weekend in May. I should have written it down, but I just wanted to say--
It's May 14 at 9:00 AM at New Cyril's.
May 14 at 9:00 AM at New Cyril's. And a great, good opportunity to celebrate Shay and his life.
Next is, I move to approve the contract with the award-- and award the contract for the painting parking lot lines and the roadway marking to D&amp;M striping in the amount of $35,100, funding from District Contract Services Account 91.1.22.20.53628.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Nope. We're literally painting in the lines. If we have no other discussion, we can-- All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Continue on, Ms. Johnson.
I move to approve the North High School-- the Nashville High School South Track Restoration Contract to the full board for discussion at the May 9 meeting. Pending bids and information provided by Mr. Smith, funding from the school district deferred maintenance account. And we're going to move it over to-- is that what we're going to do? We're just going to move it over to the May 9?
Yes, Mr. Smith wasn't able to get all the information back from the bidders in time, but the next finance synopsis is May 10. And we really couldn't-- if we were going to do it then and then have to wait another couple weeks, it would have been too late to get this work done over the summer. So what he'd like to do is bring the bids directly to the full board on May 9. And that's what the motion's requesting.
All right, I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, the next one is, I move to award the contract to Harriman A&amp;E to design a modular biology lab for CTE funds to come from District CTE Capital Reserve Fund in the amount not to exceed $10,800.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Gilio?
I just, I have a question. When I looked at that today, there was a much lower bid than everyone else, and I just, it jumped out at me. So I'm wondering why.
Yes, that was brought up at the meeting. Ms. Johnson brought it up, and I said, well, we could go out and pay more if we want. But actually, these groups are all architects who've worked with before. Harriman is the lowest. They're the ones that are doing the middle school project now. They've been here. They've seen the room. Sean did discuss it with them, and they're comfortable with their price. So it is a good question, because they are significantly lower than the other bids. But Sean said he's comfortable with them doing the work.
Thank you.
I want to just say, it jumped out at me. And have no fear, Mrs. Johnson's here questioning all that.
Yes, Ms. Raymond?
Thanks. I just want to say that I watched this meeting, and I am so excited about this lab. So I'm really hopeful that this will pass tonight. So that's all.
Well, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve the FY '22 March transfer report as presented at the 4/12/22 Finance and Operations Meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so next we have the Committee on Policy. I know Ms. Raymond is here. However, Ms. Johnson ran that meeting. Would you like to defer to her, Ms. Raymond? Or would you like to?
It's whatever Ms. Johnson's comfortable with. I'm happy to make the motions, but I only made it to part of that meeting, so I don't know that I'll be able to answer questions that come up in an effective way.
Okay. So, Ms. Johnson, how about, we'll just keep-- this is your meeting.
Well, just, exactly. I'll take over for a change, you know? Exactly. Okay, the Committee on Policy, we met on April 11, 2022. We did not finish everything on the agenda that night. So at the next policy meeting, when Ms. Raymond probably chairs again, we're going to have to finish up some of the policies. And some of them were the long ones, and I had a lot of questions that kept the meeting going all night long, probably.
I'm wondering, and we can figure out the logistics of this later on, but it is, there are so many policies that need to come up. This may be appropriate to maybe do two policy committee meetings before the next round. I mean, you guys can discuss it. I'd rather do two meetings than have a four-hour meeting, personally.
Well, I will talk to Mr. Parker about it, and then we'll get back to the board.
Okay. Perfect.
I'm just going to request any night but Wednesday. That's my babysitting day at 4:30 in the morning. It's a long day. Okay. With that said, I move to approve policy ADC tobacco products in and on school facilities and grounds.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. All those in favor? Any discussion? Sorry.
I just want to say, this was the one that got sent back to committee. I think we've got it all straightened out now, and I think it's good to go.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of approving policy ADC, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, hearing none, motion passes.
I move to approve policy AC nondiscrimination.
Second.
Ms. Raymond, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. The next one, I move to approve policy ACE, Annual Notice of Contract Information for Human Rights Officer Title-- is that nine or nine? I'm always confused with those Roman numerals. It's been so long, you know? If you don't choose it, you lose it, I guess. Okay, that's it.
Second. Thank you. So on the motion to approve policy ACE, Annual Notice of Contract Information for Human Rights Officer Title IX, Coordinator 504, Coordinator in Civil Rights Agencies--
Oh, I'm sorry, forgot the rest of it.
That's okay. I'm just reading it for the notes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve-- I move to rescind policy AC-R, Brief Statement of Nondiscrimination.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Any discussion?
I just want to note that that does not mean that we don't have a nondiscrimination policy. That is just, it was replaced by the one we just approved, for anybody who's watching and wonders about that.
We updated it.
Yes.
Okay. So any other discussion, questions? Hearing none. On the motion to rescind policy AC-R, Brief Statement of Nondiscrimination, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve policy KED, Facilities or Services Grievance and Procedure, Section 504.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Any discussion? Okay. All right. On the motion to approve policy KED, Facilities or Services Grievance, Procedure, Section 504, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes.
I move to approve policy KE, Public Complaints.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Any discussion? I just want to point out that KED and KE are really-- this is for board members. When we get emails about things, these are the main policies that we need to be referring to in regards to how to best respond to constituent concerns, especially if their children are in the schools. So it's great to have this updated policy. That's very clear about what we're supposed to do. Any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So we did not have Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation, just because there was nothing to vote on, right, Jess? Ms. Brown? Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Next, we have the Committee on Human Resources.
I, oh, I'll talk about it since the chair has left. So tonight, we had--
Sorry. I need a motion to suspend the rules first.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'd like to move to suspend the rules.
Okay. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, continue on, Ms. Gilio. Sorry about that.[1769.50]
Okay. We approve the Personnel Recommendations dated April 18th, 2022. We approve the hiring of an administrative recommendation for hiring Susan Blair as the new Title One, as the Title One Director District-wide for the '22-'23 school year at an annual salary of $91,846, Step 412. And then we also discussed the Head Teacher Job Description and approved the draft as presented.
Okay, so the first one is you would be looking for a motion to approve the Personnel Recommendations dated 4/18/2022?
Sure.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
No, moved.
Okay, so Ms. Gilio made the motion, Ms. Johnson seconded. All those in favor of approving the Personnel Recommendations dated 4/18/2022? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The second one that you spoke about was a motion to approve the Administrative Recommendation for Title One Director District-wide as presented.
And just to clarify, that was Susan Blair at a salary of $91,846?
That's correct.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Oh, Jessica has it written down for you, in case you don't.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Brown. I do, I just didn't have the, the name on there. I don't know why. All right, go ahead. Carry on.
Any discussion? Any questions? Okay, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations and welcome, Ms. Blair. I met her outside, she seems fantastic, so looking forward to getting to know her, her style.
I was on the interview with her, and she was really great.
Good.
So.
Fantastic. And then the last one that you were speaking about, you'd be looking, you made the motion to approve the Head Teacher Job Description?
The draft of it, yes.
Okay. Was, as presented?
As presented.
Okay, and I need a second for that?
Was there a change tonight during the?
No, there was no change. Did you get a second?
I'll second it. Ms. Raymond has seconded it.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of approving? Oh, yes. Mr. Clappi?
I was curious as to why Ms. Brown asked that the email we received from the North Foreign Language Head Teacher be submitted, because my take on that email was, her proposal was slightly different. Her preference would be different than what we're approving.
So I actually would also have, I would like to amend the, amend the proposal. May I make a motion? Are you comfortable with that? I move to amend the Nashville Head Teacher Position Description under the line where it says, "Teach Equivalent of Three Credits Per School Year," to, it says, "With a Maximum of Two Credits Per Quarter or Semester," to change to, "With a Minimum of Two Quarters Per Credit Per Semester." So here, I can.
Yeah, so you're asking to change it that they have at least to?
That they are teaching at least two.
Got it, I understand.
Credits Per Semester.
Thank you.
As opposed to a maximum of two credits per semester.
Mr. Clappi?
So when I, I believe the email we received asked that the maximum be one per semester, and that's, I guess I wrongly assumed that that's why you asked her email to be submitted for the record.
I'm sorry, can I just second Ms. Brown's motion so that we can discuss it?
Yes, please.
Because otherwise, we probably shouldn't discuss it. That's all. All right, Mr.?
So this was, this was discussed in committee, and just, instead of kind of going back into HR, but does administration want to speak to how the job description is set up and why it's set up the way that it is? And then we can, because I wasn't listening in HR, and that was going on. I was in the audience.
We had robust discussion with the full group. Quite frankly, that was just a letter to the board. Okay? And the principals weighed in on this, okay, more than once, all right? They did not draft this from scratch, okay? We built upon this based on, since 2015, what the job actually was, all right? And so I support moving this forward, okay, as it is. Okay, folks had a chance to weigh in on it.
But it didn't make it through committee, correct?
That's right, the committee passed it as is.
Okay.
To recommend to the full board.
Okay. Further discussion? I would, Ms. Gilio?
I just wanted to say that, yeah, that I approve it. I was in favor of it, the draft, the way it is worded, and we did have a healthy discussion about it, and we did take a vote, and the vote was two to one that we moved this forward to the full board. So that's kind of where we stand right now.
Well, it was moved to go to the full board as presented, not this amendment.
Right, as presented, yes.
Okay. Do you want to speak more to?
I'll share my perspective.
Okay.
I think there's a lot of important things going on in the district right now, and I think that the head teachers have a very important job. Obviously, it's a long list of both qualifications and job assignments. I think the fact that it hasn't been updated since 2015, this is a really good way to redefine the roles of what should happen for both classroom tasks and extra tasks. The stipend is not particularly large stipend, and so the fact that, that doesn't reflect a lot of different work than what a traditional educator would do, I think speaks to me that they should still be spending the majority of their time in the classroom delivering instruction. So, you know, at the high school level, there are, we're on block scheduling, so they have four classes per day plus an E-block. So if we are requiring, asking these head teachers to teach two classes a day, that still actually leaves three, essentially three planning periods each day so that they can perform other duties that are asked in this job description. I think that moving forward in this district with both our enrollment numbers, with the difficulty in hiring new teachers coming in, people coming out of college, I think we're kind of an all-hands-on-deck situation where we need as many people delivering instruction as we can, face-to-face with students, working hands-on. This is important work, the extra work that head teachers do. However, if we say a maximum of, well, it would be one semester, you teach two classes, and the second semester, you would only teach one class. That's a lot of time that instruction is not being delivered to students, and I think that should be the priority of our teachers, and the other work should be more support, and a more supportive role.
So the, the three periods, so E-block and then the two other periods are spent to do, do you want to kind of outline? This, this is the problem with having HR right beforehand, is you guys have this discussion, and not all of us were present for it, so instead of reviewing the tape later on, we have to kind of rehash some of this because it happened so close. Can you go through some of the tasks that they are asked to do?
Well, it's a lot of leadership and guidance responsibilities, but actually, down in the notes, no, it's okay, you can, because you actually, you, would you want to describe it? Because you were a head teacher, correct?
Yeah. That's what, kind of why I looked over at you, because I knew you were a head teacher. I was hoping you could fill me in on what it is, on the extra job.
I had originally thought about asking for an amendment that would put a maximum of one course per semester, and I think, knowing the number of retirees that we have and resignations, having done the job for three years, I think the head teachers are going to need a lot more time to prepare staff, especially new staff. There has been some turnover, I think, because it's a, it's a demanding job. I only did it for three years, and I just, I thought being in the classroom was a little bit easier. And I, and I understand what you're saying about, these are some of the best teachers that we have, serving as head teachers, but I think they wouldn't do it unless they thought that they had a lot to offer other teachers. So after we vote on this amendment, I would like to propose an amendment that we cap it at one per semester.
Can somebody tell me a little bit about if we do have, I mean, we have substitute shortages, we have teacher shortages, is there enough wiggle room in the head teacher current role that they're able to step into those classes and fill in? Or are they still kind of maintaining this one or two classes a semester in addition to their head teacher obligations? Mr. Dr. McKinney? What?
Mr. Dr. McKinney?
It's mister, and then I, like, voided it.
Got the double. This is a job description.
Mr. Dr. Sir.
This is a job description, not a contract. I would just caution the board in making changes to the job description, because this is a two-step process. One is the head teacher one, and then the next step is the curriculum liaisons, which were at the middle school level. That's a similar position, but slightly different. So if you're going to set precedent at this level, you're going to make it challenging at the next level. So I would ask that we approve these for a year. You know, we can always make changes, we can always be flexible, we can consult with the union. But as I shared earlier, the only thing that's in the contract is the allotment or the stipend at $1,800 or $1,500, depending on the size of the department, which you know. So this is just a guideline. There's always that wiggle room of all other duties aside or other things. I think we have great people who are willing to step up, but we just need to cement kind of the work and the schedule of the folks that are taking this stipend, because it's been basically a considerable amount of time. Does that help?
It does, and I, I think to Mr. Clappi's point about the new, the new teachers coming in and needing a lot more support and guidance.
And I neglected to mention the interviewing. Every position, as far as I know, the head teacher is in on at the high school level.
I certainly, I feel like this is something that certainly can be addressed. Would you be in favor of pushing this amendment out to after we kind of get a little bit more even on the amount of teachers we have? Like, once we're more fully staffed?
Like, the discussion, so, you know, move to table the amendment to, like, October 1st or something like that?
Do we need this job description for our spring hiring?
May I? I'm guessing, based on the past, that teachers' schedules are going to be drafted soon, and teachers are told how many courses have been requested, how many positions, how many slots need to be filled. And I, the head teachers might have some wiggle room, because we're talking about just one class, adding one class or reducing one class. So I think there's some.
I think if we pushed out to, to October, we can have it, if it, if there is room to change it, we can start it up for the following school year. Would that work?
Well, they need, they try to finalize the schedule as, as soon as they can in the spring.
So we won't, well, she's willing to table this amendment, we can revisit it in October, and if it passes, it would be a start date of the next school year. And hopefully, we have enough staff, we have enough teachers, the committees are back up and running, we just kind of have a better sense of, of how people are doing once we're back at kind of like a normal level. But, I mean, I don't think.
So I'm confused. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm confused. Are, are we saying, pass it as it was presented and then take up the amendment in October?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Dr. McKinney?
The board can always, the administration can always recommend to, you know, revisit a job description, make changes. I think the other part of this that's, you know, maybe hidden or not written is the piece around curriculum work. So we do need our leaders to help revisit the curriculum after the pandemic and make some changes so that it's all the way across the board. So this gives us the ability and clarity to do that work, aside from being in front of kids. I'm not saying one is more important than the other, but we do need to revisit some curriculum across the board. Thank you.
All right. I'd be willing to table this until October.
Okay. All right, so are you?
I'll move to table this amendment until October.
I'll second that.
2022.
Okay.
Someone should write that down so that we remember to bring it forward on that agenda.
I have my handy-dandy calendar. Okay.
I know, I just was waiting for everyone.
Yeah, and I was waiting.
Other than me to stop writing. It's in October 2022. Okay, so on the motion to table the amendment until October 2022, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the tabled motion passes. So now we have back on the board Ms. Gilio's motion to approve the Head Teacher Job Description as presented.
Yes.
And then Ms. Raymond seconded that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Fantastic. Questions? Okay. On the motion to approve the Head Teacher Job Description, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Wait, who's that?
Nay.
Okay. 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 Any liaison reports? I know, we haven't, we didn't have JSSBC since the last meeting, so.
Nope, it's this Thursday.
It is this Thursday.
It is this Thursday, yep.
Okay. Do we need to go into non-public for that? Okay. So we are getting passed out the Food Service Workers Collective Bargaining Agreement, and Mr. Donovan can speak to it once everybody has a copy in hand.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Donovan, do you want to speak to this?
To that sheet specifically, all that is, is cleaning up some language. Actually, the contract prior to this, we added a 25 and plus on the grid, so that language was not put in the basic wage schedule in this contract, so that was just Mr. Pop over there. That's just adding it, it was just a, a language. It's in, it's in the grid, it just wasn't in the language that matched the grid.
Got it. Okay.
And we received a separate email with the actual contract?
Yes.
Okay. Which I have.
Yes. If you, do you want me to summarize it, or do you have any questions on it, or do you want to?
Should we have, do we have someone to speak public comments to it?
All right.
Before we vote? Since there were no public comments earlier? No.
Ms. Gilio?
Having been on this negotiating team for well over a year, I totally support this contract.
Great. Do you want to just two, three sentences summarize? Or however long you want?
Maybe four sentences?
Yes.
Okay, it's, it's a three-year contract, which covers the current school year we're in now, '21, '22, '22, '23, and '23, '24. It has increases for this current year at 3.7%, and then the next two years, including steps, 3.3 and 3.4. It also includes for staff that have been here, and they're going to work 90% of each of the semesters, there's a $400 stay-on bonus for the first two years of the contract. So once this is approved, we'll pay out anyone that worked 90% of the first semester, we'll receive $400, and then we'll do the same calculation in June, and we'll do that next year. So it's, that's, that 800 stay-on is the first two years, not all three years.
That's nice.
And the, this union agreed to the new insurance language that the city has been requesting. And then, other than that, we added a sick day for Tier 2 and Tier 3, so that they now have five days. Tier 2 went from four to five, Tier 3 from three to four. And then we did change, the, the end of the contract talked about guaranteed number of days, so we changed the language on the guaranteed number of days paid, where if, if this, if we were to cancel school early, which we've done at times when we shift cancel school early, which we've done at times when we shift to hours, or the first two days that we cancel, if there's no work required, then they don't, we don't have to pay. If we cancel three years, we guarantee them one. Four years, guaranteed them two.
Days?
Oh, three. Three, three. Three days guaranteed one, four days guaranteed two. One zero, two zero. And that's my quick summary.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. At one time, and I don't know because we were out of school, was this paid out of the lunch money, that contract for the workers?
Yes. All these funds will be coming out of the Special Revenue Fund for Food Service.
Do we have enough money to pay this contract out?
Yes, we do.
And so, the first year of the contract is 3.7% increase, right?
Yes. That includes steps. So, there's four, there's four different levels in the contract. There's different percentages to each of those levels, but it nets out to 3.7.
And next year is what?
Second year is 3%, with steps is 3.3. And the third year is 3% with steps is 3.4.
3.4. Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay. So, I'd be looking for a motion to, I thought your hand was up. So, I would be looking for a motion to approve the Food Service Workers Collective Bargaining Agreement 2021 to 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Darling. Any further discussions or questions? Okay. So, all those in favor of approving the Food Service Workers Collective Bargaining Agreement 2021 to 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Congratulations on a successful negotiating agreement. We are now up to the second public comment. We don't have a list, but we have one, one new arrival. Mr. Adam Marqu.
Adam Marqu for Jolory Lane. I'm president of the Nashua Teachers Union. Thank you for approving the food service contract. We will vote tomorrow at 2:30. It is a little backwards this time, but scheduling-wise, if we didn't do it that way, we would have had to wait till after April vacation, and it just wasn't so. I appreciate the flexibility from the district and the board for voting first and for us voting second. And I look forward to bringing you those results tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other second comments? No. Knees out, elbows up. That's how you stay safe in a crowd. All right. So, we are now on to board members' comments for the evening. I started off with Mr. Claffey last time, so I will start over here with Ms. Gilio.
I do not believe I have any comments tonight.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
I just want to say how delightful it was to have the junior ROTC come in here. They were just really delightful. And the young lady who spoke, she was so poised and confident and wasn't even reading from notes, which I can't do. I think that was very impressive. So, obviously, they're going to be great leaders in the future. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Ms. Raymond?
I just want to echo Ms. Brown's comments. The JR ROTC is always so impressive when they come in. And I really enjoy hearing from them. And I just want to say thank you to the board members for the support everybody has given me while I have recovered from my surgery. We got takeout the other night with the gift certificate you guys kindly gave us. So, that was really helpful, because I am still working on multi-step tasks like cooking. So--
I'd have a problem with that for a long time.
So, anyways, I appreciate everybody's patience with me as I am staring down at my paper instead of looking up. It's not personal. It's just trying to keep my vertigo in check. So, thank you all. I appreciate it. I'm glad to be back.
We're glad to have you back. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Darling?
No comment.
No comment. Ms. Johnson?
I'd like to echo about the ROTC program. I think our students are delightful, and it's good to see leadership. We see so many people as followers. We need to have some leadership. Ms. Raymond, it's nice to have you back. Too bad it's not back in the '60s when we used to say, "Don't cook tonight, call Chicken Delight." You know? This is our last, there's no more meetings now after tonight. We're like free birds. Everybody enjoyed their vacation. What?
Thursday.
Well, I don't, I'm not on that anymore, so I don't have any more meetings. So, I just want to say to everybody, I hope everybody and our students enjoy their spring vacation, and the weather stays nice. No snowstorms.
Well, just tomorrow morning.
We don't talk about that. As long as it's not Wednesday morning, we're good.
Mr. Claffey? Okay. Ditto for all-around. I just want to thank our administration for getting everything together that we needed. It's nice to be able to come into meetings. We've already had our questions answered, and we're able to move pretty quickly through here.